Evening. I'd like to call to order this the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. Please rise for a moment of silence. The pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, thank you. Fishbein?
Here.
Lathan?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Shertel?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandri? And Chairman Servoni?
Here. Counselor Zandri did advise me that he has a work obligation this evening. Item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through S.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Item four, no items are removed from the consent agenda. Item five, the public question and answer period.
Good evening, thank you. Jared Liu, 59 Curtis Avenue. Quick question. I saw that we're hiring a consultant to write grants. With the $800,000 grant that the consultant is writing, if we were awarded that, how much of that would be paid to the consultant?
We, I don't believe we've hired anyone yet, but there, upon hiring, the conditions are that the consultant only makes money if we are rewarded the grant. Now, what the percentage is, that's, I don't have that, but the money is a relatively small portion of it from history of the 800,000.
Could I ask that you just get back to me when you find out the number?
Sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, I close the public question and answer period and move on to item six, which is discussion possible action regarding UPS EU Local 424 18B, 42430, 42431 Board of Education Units Pension Arbitration Award.
Good evening, Counselors. Jim Hutt, Town Human Resources Director.
Good evening, Dennis Cicarello, Labor Attorney.
Thanks for coming, and what do we have?
We have a labor arbitration award specifically regarding the pensions of three Board of Ed units. The primary issue had to do with introducing the cash balance plan to these units. We were successful with that. The only issue that the union essentially won had to do with providing statements to employees, which we do anyway.
Is there something different about the statements that the award refers to? If we're doing them anyway, what's going to change?
Well, what's going to change is the cash balance plan, you know, it's a different, it's a different plan. The information in the statements for the cash balance plan will obviously be different than those for the defined benefit plan. The cash balance plan will provide employees with an annual statement of their contributions, the town's contributions, and then whatever the interest credit is that the town would receive on its investments in the pension fund. So there is a little bit of a difference between the statements.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Laterno?
Good evening. Jim, could you just briefly tell us for the folks at home the difference between a cash balance plan and a defined benefit plan? If it can be done briefly.
Well, I'm not sure it can be done that brief, but, but the essence is, the cash balance plan takes away the investment risk that the town has each year to provide a future benefit to an employee under the defined benefit plan. So with the defined benefit plan, you have a multiplier, you have the final average salary, and the credited years of service that employee can project down the road what their pension's going to be. With the cash balance plan, the employee has a career, they make a contribution of their, they make a contribution of their annual salary, the town makes a contribution, and instead of the investment risk of having to come up with a certain dollar amount for their pension, the employee receives a credit of whatever the town would earn, you know, for that year and its investment. So that investment risk has been reduced. Upon retirement, the employee can take, with the cash balance plan, the employee can take a lump sum payment, and then the town has no more, you know, future liability. You know, they take that liability with them, or they can take an actuarially reduced, they can take an annuity, a life annuity for themselves, or if they want to have a joint and survivor annuity. And then, at that point, the town will continue to make the pension payments to them past their death, and then whoever they would leave the money to. So the investment risk in the cash balance plan has been reduced significantly. In a lot of respects, it functions while the employee's at work, like it's defined contribution plan. It's at the point of retirement that it, you know, that it resembles a defined benefit plan.
Have you found that a lot of, a lot of towns have changed over to this system?
Well, you know, that was, you know, something that was discussed in negotiations. From, from my understanding, there's other municipalities that are currently looking into it, but the town of Wallingford is the only town in the state of Connecticut that has a cash balance plan, you know, for new hire employees.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions or comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Testa?
Just clarify, which bargaining unit this applies to? This applies to the Board of Ed Secretaries, the Board of Ed Food Service Workers, and the IT workers over at the Board of Ed. Thank you. You're welcome.
That being said, as this is an arbitration award, and we appear to have prevailed in many ways, I don't think there's any action for the council to take unless we were to decide to appeal. But again, I don't see any point to appealing. We've largely and significantly prevailed, so.
We're not recommending an appeal.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further questions for you, thank you for your time, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Onto item seven, discussion regarding motor vehicle and personal property theft. Chief, please. Good evening, and thank you for coming. We do have a letter which was sent to us by Jessica Teta on behalf of a group she's been meeting with, and I understand, Chief, you've been meeting with them as well.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any introduction for us?
I do. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, council members. I'm Chief William Wright of the Police Department. To my left is Lieutenant John Ventura, our midnight shift commander. John is also the commander of the combined Wallingford-Cheshire ESU team. And to my right is Lieutenant Michael Colavoppi, our Detective Division Commander. We'll happy to take your questions or the questions from the Wallingford Watch Group.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Morganstein, this was forwarded to me by you. Do you have anything to start with?
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, I just wanted to thank you and thank certainly the Neighborhood Crime Group, maybe there's some more official name, for inquiring further, and I became more enlightened on what exactly is happening. Reminds me a lot of the height of the opiate crisis, and there were groups of people that would gather other people in a car, come to certain places, partake of certain activities, and it's very organized. And you, as always, are rising to the occasion to do a great job to let it be better understood by the public, put your workforce to work against it, but it's a very difficult process. So as with the opiates, I think it's very valuable that we have a group of committed community members that are meeting regularly with you, feel that they have your ear, your work, the whole thing. And I think as we come towards budget season and how we're, you know, doing all the things that we need to do, having a good understanding from you of what you see as your needs. We have this nice laid-out paperwork from this public group, but we're also looking, yeah, where do you see your department going to respond to this? I know there's also work needing to be done at the legislature with how some of these youth are dealt with. And then the, one other thing that I do want to bring up that I have heard from you and others is that we had to actually scale back our foot patrol, bike patrol people, and I think although that's kind of perhaps seen by some as, I don't even want to use the word extra, but as a, you know, a lighter something, it's important, especially since we are dealing with youth, that these bike patrol, foot patrol people interact with the public in a way that builds camaraderie, builds trust with the police, and may also have more veneer to the ground as well, where we depend on things that may be seen or heard that aren't, you know, "We see you guys looking like you are right now. I'm not going to behave the same way as I might if you're in a little more relaxed atmosphere." So, yeah, if you can let us know where you see things going in response to this group and the community and your needs coming up in this coming budget season.
Sure. Kind of to set the frame, this current fiscal year, I asked for two additional police officers. The mayor approved that, and this council subsequently approved that during the budget session. So we are fully staffed now. The Personnel Department has been working with us to allow me to hire lateral transfer police officers from other agencies now. It's not that I'm looking to rob somebody else's help, but if we are advertising that we're in need of officers and, and they apply, then we're certainly giving them some consideration. So I say that to say this, the turnaround time is very quick. You know, where we'd have to send somebody off to the academy for 27 or 28 weeks now, and then 14 or 15 weeks of field training, these officers, we're bringing them in and turning them right around in about five weeks and putting them, putting them out on the, on the street. Currently, although we are fully staffed, I have three officers who are out on long-term injury leave, and I do have three officers who are within the field training program. So six bodies, I'm really not able to have on any given day, which is not bad. There were times when we were 10 or 12 short. So my plan moving forward is to respectfully request staffing to incrementally grow the agency. I need to be very careful in how many that is in any one time. If I have to send them to the academy, which is a possibility, I have to hope to get seats in the academy, which is difficult to do to get more than one or two, outside of just the pure cost of labor. I need to also consider the increases in our clothing and equipment lines, which are contractual with our police union. I'd have to grow the fleet incrementally to give them something to drive. And I'm not blind to the fact that there are a lot of other departments in town that are probably in some shape of need or some sort of need themselves. So Jessica's group has offered in the document that you have that they would like to see us hire for, but I also need to be very, very careful that I don't outgrow the building that we're in. We have a large contingent of female officers, probably one of the largest percentages in the state, I would think, but if that were to swing back towards more male officers, I very well could outgrow the locker room that essentially that they change their clothes in. So I need to be very careful that we just don't simply outgrow the building. I think right now, as we sit here, I have four or five vacant lockers in the male locker room. So there could come a time where we just don't have the room within the building for, to grow a staff to 90. There's a lot of discussion about how many police officers per thousand you should have. The average is always, in my career anyway, is thought to have been two per 1,000, so which would give us around 90. We're currently staffed at 73. If I could get us to 80, that'd be really nice, but I understand the cost associated with that is significant. So what have we done in response to this issue? Lieutenant Ventura will certainly tell you that it's been his prerogative to stem this problem. The initiatives that he's taken on the midnight shift, and certainly he can speak to them, are almost all-inclusive of stopping and preventing this activity from happening. Major thoroughfours into town, intelligence leads from other communities, suspicious activity, calls from neighbors. It's a large town, as you know. Currently, tonight for Wednesday morning, we're, we will staff eight police officers, a shift commander, and a sergeant, which is, which is a good number. But there are some days that we can run down as four, with a shift commander and potentially not a supervisor on the road with them. So it becomes a staffing issue. We're running short in our Detective Division, we're running short in Community Police, they're looking for more help there. We've pulled the people that we can and put them back into patrol where we can, not specifically for this problem, but for the general operation of the agency in total. And I just offer you this, although this problem is occurring mainly in the overnight hours or the period of darkness anyway, we still have a very large commercial district that we're responsible for that is running 24 hours a day. Our call volume simply at Walmart last year was over 470 calls for service, and that never stops throughout the day. So as much as I think John would like to pour all of his resources into the neighborhoods, I just can't abandon that commercial district either, because that would, we'd be having this discussion about what's going on there. So investigatively, Lieutenant Colavoppi's division has done yeoman's work with bringing some of these cases to at least the standard of probable cause, which is what we need to get into court. We don't like to operate at probable cause. We put ourselves well above that. We'd like to work above that towards proof beyond a reasonable doubt, but I'll be bluntly honest with you that a lot of the cases that we've made that have significant levels of probable cause have been refused at the prosecutor or judge's level. I'll give you a case in point. Probably 10 weeks ago, maybe a little bit less, Lieutenant Ventura's team captured, if you will, five juveniles from other towns down in the lower South Main Street area breaking into cars, driving a stolen car themselves. While on scene and in the perimeter, a stolen car not affiliated with this group just happened to drive through. The driver of that car was later apprehended in North Branford. But I will tell you that two nights later, two of the five that we arrested that night were arrested once again in Hartford in a car stolen from West Haven, and one of these juveniles had a loaded stolen pistol on him. So the problem is widespread, and I'm very worried about what goes on here. I can't worry about what goes on at the state legislature. I think the system needs a total rebuild, but that's just my own opinion. So locally here, we've had great success. We are frustrated by, to some extent anyway, of the fact that we've made a number of cases that haven't really seen the light of a courtroom. And it's frustrating for us because we need to communicate with our victims, right? And nothing makes us happier than to call them and say, "We realize that our intent is to prevent this from happening to you, but since it has happened to you, we've solved this" to some extent. It's frustrating for us not to be able to make that call, or, and we don't pass blame. So we're hesitant to call a victim and say, "We did everything we could," but, you know, those in higher authority have determined that, you know, this case shouldn't be brought forward. So we're grateful for the work that Jessica's group, and I say Jessica's group, the Wallingford Watch Group, is doing. They're very collaborative. They're deeply involved and committed to this issue. They've been a great partner with us. I'm hopeful that we've been equally as collaborative with them. But we recognize that the problem is large. It's not going away. It's not anything that's only occurring here. It's occurring in a lot of places. I'm most worried about what's going on here. So we've made identifications off of photo ID, evidence left at the scene, fingerprints in some cases where there is, there are fingerprints on file for adults. So we're doing the work that we need to be doing. And it's easy to sit here, or would be easy to sit here and say that we need, you know, another group of officers to help stem this off, but I, as I said a few minutes ago, I recognize the cost associated with, with that.
So two questions with your very informative information. Does the other end of these items being stolen have any reach? Is there a market that is being used by these folks? So if you steal, you know, this and this and this, is there a ready-made market that we have any knowledge of that could be worked kind of from that end?
So I'm going to let Lieutenant Colavoppi speak to that, but I will tell you that when the sun comes up in the morning, and we've had incidents overnight, right, our first call is to our intelligence sources, but I'll let him speak to that.
Actually, so I won't forget, because I'm terrible. I'll let you answer that in a second, but my second question, I think, is for you, Chief. So help me understand a bit better how the police academy, we've talked about the lateral moving, why is it that Wallingford might have a difficult time getting a police from the police academy, did I hear you say? I mean, I know there's more of a cost, but I thought you heard, heard you say something about also difficulty.
Right. So there is a cost. A few years ago, the state legislature passed, and I don't know that it's statutory, it's certainly regulatory, that I think we pay $2,500 per recruit to send them to off to the academy, just to cover the expenses. It's residential, so they stay there. The difficulty is trying to get a seat in the academy itself. So there are 93 organized police departments in Connecticut, and all 93 from time to time are vying for, typically they see between 45 and 50 candidates in each class, and they'll run two classes at a time, although they overlap. I think there's five total in a year. So we would be fortunate to get three seats across a 12-month calendar year.
So is it literally just there's a certain number, and you put your town's name in, or the officers choose to want to come to you?
No. So in order to go to the academy, you have to be employed by a police department. You can't, you can't go there on your own. And it just becomes a numbers game. So we've used academies in Waterbury, who runs their own because they have such a need. We've used academies in Milford because they have such a need. We have a reputation of providing top-quality candidates to these satellite academies. They can't be bogged down by candidates that are less than 100%. So we have that reputation. So we are invited from time to time to send candidates to these satellite academies, should they be running. Now, it's a cost for the towns to run an independent academy, so we supply them with instructors and material where we can to help offset the cost. We have a number of academy certified, if you will, instructors in a number of, of core areas. So, so that's a difficulty is just getting the seats to begin with. That's why we're starting this lateral process. It's actually worked out very, very well.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Detective, for being patient.
Good evening. So the majority of items that are taken from these cars are not identifiable. They're coins, cash, purses, and usually the purses, backpacks are dumped a short distance away. We'll find those in somebody's driveway down the street. And then I can say the majority of the vehicles that are entered, nothing's taken at all. They just rummage through them. Not sure what they're looking for. We, the other night, we had an owner's manual for a pickup truck taken. So not sure what the value is of an owner's manual, but these are kids, these are juveniles going through the car, just grabbing things quick. Items that can be identified, such as jewelry, laptops, iPads, credit cards, we are following up on. We have resources available to us to conduct investigations as to where those items may be, and those items we do follow up on.
And then I did hear that there have been a few incidents where in broad daylight, where while people are home, there have been some home entries though as well. Are these juveniles similarly?
Yes.
So we're not fearful that this is even particularly unorganized take, sell, injury?
Yeah, it's...
You can't describe it as fun, but...
Yeah, we can't really describe what they're doing. Some of the juveniles that we have arrested and tried talking to won't talk to us. So they have a history within family, you know, of being involved in criminal activity.
Very dis...
So they won't tell us why they're doing this. We try.
Yeah.
We try to interview them.
All right. Thank you all so much.
Counselor Lathan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you guys for coming tonight and for your work with the, with the community group. A lot of my thoughts or questions were answered in your extended detailed answers to Counselor Morganstein's, but I had a couple more. Do you, do you know, or can you report how many car break-ins have been reported within the past three, six, 12 months?
In 2018, calendar year total, 183 thefts from motor vehicle.
Okay. And then the letter references, this is the letter from the community group that I think you've, I imagine you've seen or worked with them on, references an increase in home invasions, a number on that. I'm aware of one that was covered in the newspaper. Were there any additional?
No.
No.
So the incident that you're speaking of is being actively investigated, so I really don't want to say a lot about it.
That's, and that's, that's fine. I just, yep. And then, oh, go ahead.
I just want to say that we're deeply concerned about that.
Yeah.
For this, for all the obvious reasons. Our investigation has led us up into the Hartford area. A neighboring town had a very, very similar incident not far from where our location was. Those cars were also found in the Hartford area. And just last week, another town yet had a very, very similar set of circumstances with the cars located in the Hartford area. So where our success has been with the overnight crews coming from south of here, this is obviously a different crew.
Yeah.
With a different intent.
Okay, thank you. And then in that same letter, there were some requests or recommendations... Uh and then in that same letter, there were some requests or recommendations made. Um I don't know how um if that was if it came more from the group or if it was done in unison with the police department, but I wanted to hit on some of those bullet points uh just to kind of cover them for everybody else. But um also if if you could respond, and a lot of them I already kind of know the answers to, but I thought it was an appropriate venue to to have those answered. Uh like numbers one, um number one is to hire more officers. So every year you request more. Um I think you've indicated that you'll be you're requesting to to hire more as well. Um I think that's covered, but I wasn't sure if you had anything else to say. You kind of talked about it during Counselor Morganstein's time.
Nothing for.
Yep. And then uh two and four cover uh a review of distribution of resources, uh two before the night shift, four for the day shift. I I understand you're constantly doing that.
That's um an evaluation that the shift commander takes on daily. Um to Lieutenant Ventura's uh team on the midnight shift. Um I do know from speaking to him every morning that um there's great initiative with the resources that he has.
Yeah.
To prevent this from happening.
Great, thank you. Um three and five are more community-based. One is uh community policing and off uh for neighborhoods. Uh the other is uh some sort of opt-in and notification system, either text, email, Facebook. Has there been any kind of thought or talk about that?
So the town currently has access to the Everbridge system um for mass notification and emergencies. Um if we wanted to expand on that for more community-based local events, um such as this and others, um we would have to purchase um a version of either Everbridge or or any other um mass notification system. Um so we have that. We have um posted our um press releases on the town's website. Um the issue with social media to a point is I don't have anyone to manage that.
Right.
Um and it takes care and feeding, right?
Yeah. Um. Right, exactly.
And you'll hear me say that um should you need us, um it is our hope that you'll call us.
Right.
Please, um because it's our chance to talk to you directly and and get whatever information you have um directly from you versus trying to play a um, you know, a back and forth of what exactly i- is going on. So um we could do um almost a daily press briefing um on what happened in the prior twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to that. It's time-consuming, um but I will tell you that um we've made notification to our community. I've made it myself through uh both letters um and uh press releases that the local media has picked up on about this issue, and I know my peers have um as well in other towns.
Okay. And I and I certainly don't want you to get bogged down in, you know, having to have like a daily press briefing and, you know, one morning there's nothing or two things and it's just kind of a lot of work to put together. But now, see, uh and and really by asking these questions, I wanted to flush out that this is stuff that you're constantly kind of discussing or thinking about. Um and two of the other uh a cou- couple of the other requests, um crew more cruisers on bicycles, y- you're doing that now and you've and we've expanded into the schools. Any other thoughts or plans to maybe get some more bicycles or?
So the bu- the bicycle issue is um and I think um Counselor Morganstein um touched on it, is something that we initially put into place for the downtown center area, um the walking trails out at the linear trail in in that. The officers who are trained to ride the bike and it's a week-long training program, um when available, take the bike out into the neighborhood. Now, I can tell you that it doesn't occur very often because we're just busy. Um but the intent is for them to take the bike with them um into the area of that they're assigned. Um I'm not opposed to adding more bicycles to that, but I can tell you that for the four bikes that we have, um on any given day, there could be two hanging on the rack.
Right.
Because either the officers that are trained aren't working or um it's just too busy. And and some days it really is unfortunately just too busy.
Yeah.
Um and that goes for the walking beats in the center of town as well. Um you know, we removed the officer from the corner probably eighteen months ago to put that resource into operations. Um and seeing how busy we are and seeing that the bicycles and the walking beats aren't always available from resource management point of view.
Yeah.
Um some days I regret taking the police officer off the corner because it really is um something that um I truly believe is the impetus for community police is that police officer with his feet on the ground.
Yeah.
Um having dialogue with, you know, with the community, so.
And and I agree with you and I I defer to your judgment and the allocation of resources, but I I do agree with you on that as well. Is there a plan or is it a thought that with the addition of officers and possibly the next budget season that an officer would end up on the corner again? Or that's kind of like, we're past it now, we can't look back because of the load?
Yeah, so I have right of assignment, so I don't really need to um wait for either approval, permission, or the budget cycle.
I mean, quantity of officers.
It becomes just a resource.
Okay.
Management issue.
Okay. And then, uh sorry, just a couple more. The um it was recommended or suggested to set up random DUI or registration checks, um more for the appearance of appearances, I guess. Um I know that the DUI is often funded by state or other programs, those type of checks, um but are um interesting if you want to address that at all.
So um DUI checkpoints are funded by the Federal Highway Administration passed down to the state. Um run in a very, very formal, formal, specific manner.
Yeah.
To make sure that we account for everything that's in the statute and law, case law. Um the process of setting up random registration checks um without a reason for doing so can be certainly unconstitutional. And if anything, we are um cognizant of that to the extent that we recognize that um to do so just to remind people that we're around and should you choose or have a thought that you're going to commit a crime in our town, you might be better off moving along. I'm hopeful that our mere presence does that. Um and the thought of setting up a checkpoint to do that um alarms me.
Okay.
You know, not to to mince words, it's.
Yeah, no, thank you. We spend a lot of time in these meetings talking to not mince words, so mincing words is appreciated. And the last part is uh and you collaborate with local jurisdictions all the time. We even talked about that. One of you is just the leader of the the multi-town task force or whatever. Um so thank you for coming. Um I know I had my car was rummaged through uh several years ago, kind of at the very start of the uptick and all this. I don't remember if I locked my door or not. I thought I locked it. Maybe I didn't. I don't know. Um I just lost the GPS. I didn't use anymore. Nothing else was stolen, um but the response was fast. Um the interest was there. I didn't feel like I was being bulldozed over or or brushed off by the police officer that this wasn't important. Um and my interest in reporting it as I stated at the time was just so you can put a pin on the map in case other people call and or need to put stuff together. Um a- and we've had other conversations. I think what you're doing is is it is you're doing a good job and and you had the success uh, you know, a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago, whatever it is. And um and thank you for not just the outreach, but then working with the response from that outreach with um, you know, a group like this Community Watch Group that has come up. I know there's other community watch groups um that reach out to you, the the coffee with the officer and whatnot on the on the Center Street. So thank you very much, uh and I and thank you for entertaining my questions to clarify some of the points in the letter. Counselor Chortel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just a few, just to clarify a few things, I'll start with staffing because you just went over that early on in your remarks. You said that you're at seventy-three currently. Um ideally, if you use the two-per-one-thousand, excuse me, uh standard, you'd be at ninety. But then you talked about there you have six vacancies or you have six or no, you're you're fully staffed.
Yeah, we're fully staffed. I just have six uh officers that I don't have access to yet.
Okay, okay, okay. Uh we um. I I know that there was talk a year ago about SROs. We don't formally have SROs, but we do have an increased presence and I believe both high schools and both middle schools. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
What is that presence in terms of time? How many officers? Is it one officer rotating, two officers rotating?
It's two officers who spend um approximately three hours a day, primarily one at each high school. And then on an odd day of the week, um with no certain schedule, they spend it at the middle school for that same three-hour period.
Okay, thank you. Um and then, so two years ago, as you remember, uh there was an effort by a few of us up here to get you a couple of officers and it didn't it didn't go through. We you we did give you two more last year because you asked for it. My question really is about the cost. Um my recollection two years ago was the cost to add two officers was about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, but I don't think that included a vehicle. I think you said at the time adding two doesn't necessitate adding another vehicle. So I guess my first, is that two-hundred-and-twenty figure still ballpark if we were to add, you know, for per two officers?
Yeah, I I think it's a good number. I think um between salary, the fringe benefit package, um clothing and equipment and every other thing, it would probably be right around a hundred and ten thousand per man.
What's the tipping point to have to add a vehicle? Is it four or is it?
We are probably stretched as thin as we can with the fleet. We've kept one vehicle back um this year. I I I think you're all familiar with the management of our fleet in that when we are done with our cars, they get pushed over to public works and into the motor pool, if you will. I'm not sure how they distribute their cars, but I'd need to continually feed that side of our operation or their operation because by the time we give them those cars, they're yeah, good handful of years old with a lot of miles on them, so although they run okay for the next half a dozen years or so, I think they keep them four or five more years. If I were to cut that off, um they might be in in bad shape over time, right? So I have to continually feed that. So over time, we're gonna have to add um, we're gonna have to add a vehicle. In fact, this is how we worked it this year. The mayor, um we replaced his car with what he might think is a new car, but it's like five years old. Um and we actually. We, as much as I try to get him something, he just, yeah. So we took his old car back um and are running that in our fleet, which we gave him to begin with, so um we're doing the best we can with the fleet, but I would, we really need to consider um adding to the fleet.
Okay, um thank you for that, um Mayor, I'm sorry. Uh and then my my last question is around, my second to last question is around the buildings. You talked about your you have four or five locker room vacancies and that there's a concern, I mean, you're you're seven officers short of eighty, which you said was kind of the sweet spot, um but you only have four or five male openings. Is is there any potential to, you know, be creative and and look at other buildings the town owns and have like a satellite, you know, the 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 old train station comes to mind, and I know the Board of Ed is in there now, but I but there's certainly other buildings too that the town might own. Is there any, I guess, so my question isn't so much have you comment on that building. My question is more philosophically, could could you open up a satellite office or is that not something you'd do? Do you have to have everyone in one buil- building?
No, um it's nice to have everyone in one place. As you know, we just built a new storage building uh behind our building to get the traffic maintenance shop up and into, so we're all now in one place. Um we don't necessarily all need to be in one place. In fact, I have a meeting scheduled with Mayor Dickinson and Henry McCully, um if not next week, the week after, to talk about our building and the fact that um it's been thirty-five years now since it's been converted from the Army to our building and all of the original utilities there are starting to fail a little bit, but I see that we're gonna dump a ton of money into them if we don't make some um improvement there. So between utilities, the men's and women's showers and then the locker rooms there, I really need to seriously consider um a renovation of the cell block. Our cell doors are still barred, um steel bar, which is um a high liability issue in policing. Um we need to have a solid steel door there and some renovation there. So there's a lot of things that are coming due over the next, you know, handful of years that I want to start to plan for now, um but we'd all don't need to be in in one place specifically.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I I think, you know, to echo um what everyone else has said, I mean, grateful for the work you've done, grateful for the residents who have stepped up as well. Um my just editorialize, um I, you know, I think I totally respect your sensitivity to cost, but I would not, that's our job. You know, you need to, you need what you need. And it it does concern me that we are seventeen officers short of what you are saying would be the ideal number, which is ninety. That that concerns me. Um and uh I just think, and I also get concerned, I I don't want the reason we don't get properly staffed to be shortage of lockers. And I just, so I I or a lack of imagination, not on your part at all, but I just think, you know, just don't be afraid to ask for what you need from us. Um and again, we you do a great job and we want to support you. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief, gentlemen.
Good evening, sir.
How are you? Thank you very much for everything you're doing and everything you do every day. Um I had a couple of questions about this issue. One, I um found it interesting you're talking about, and I've seen this discussed earlier, um talking about apprehensions you might make and then uh not long after, the same people turning up elsewhere, getting apprehended for the same type of thing, which assumes that they were let go to do that. Do you have any indication or any record of any any similar recidivism within our own town? Any indication that people that have been here have been here hitting us more than once after you you might have you might have caught them? Is there any of that?
Most of the uh people that we have arrested prior, we have finding that they are suspects and current things that are going on. I know for certain back in two thousand and seventeen, I did an arrest warrant for a juvenile, um and he's a suspect in current car break-ins that are going on, so.
Within our community. Correct. I mean, so so, okay, so you have?
We're finding that a lot of people that were were hitting us in the past are continuing to do so.
Well, I suppose it, you know, until until they're stopped, it would make sense and it's working out for them, unfortunately. So I I appreciate what you're doing to stop that. I'm asking this question because oftentimes the uh the argument is made, the point is made that, um you know, there's a problem at the at the court level. You may mention of your desire that maybe some pr- uh systems were changed, but when we hear that um punishment is not sufficient, let's just call it that, and people are 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 being uh sort of like a revolving door within the Justice Department for whatever reason, um that's a common refrain. It's a common expression of frustration. I can only imagine how frustrating it is for you, but what I don't truly know is from where I sit is is to what degree uh that problem um contributes to what's going on right now. Can you give me an idea?
So um everything concerning law enforcement's dealings with juveniles is and always has been and always should be in the best interest of the child. I agree with that. Uh that it's a statement that some some people would argue with. I I agree with it. In this case, and sometimes in the best interest of the child is that there is some punitive measures taken, right, to stem um this this repetitive um activity, if you will, or pattern. Um and I'm not saying that rehabilitation and and counseling isn't also appropriate or whatever the measures are, but there has to be some punitive measure. And um that alone, I don't know necessarily works. I think there's there's a lot of studies that would show and research would show that incarceration of juveniles um without further support is probably not the best thing to do, but at the same time, there has to be something. And um presently, we can appeal to a judge um overnight, right, to um mandate or request that a child be mandated into custody. There's currently in our area, um there is no longer a juvenile holding facility in New Haven. We go to Bridgeport. Um and many times. And many times, there's just not room or the judge doesn't find cause, for whatever reason, good, bad or indifferent. But there's got to be a punitive measure. And we do know that many times now, cases hitting the juvenile docket are not even getting to a prosecutor, they're getting to a probation officer who is trying to manage probably 100 cases a day off the docket and is trying to lighten the load for that which gets into court. And I'm not saying that's the wrong approach. What I'm saying is that over time, there needs to be more of a punitive measure to enforce the laws that Councilman Fishbein and his team up in Hartford Pass, that's why they do that. So are we frustrated? You bet we are. Are the officers next to me and everyone else that works there working their tails off in this issue? They are. And this group that's sitting, seated behind me in the audience will tell you that they're equally as frustrated. And I'm grateful for their collaboration, but they're frustrated and they certainly have every right to be. But I don't want to pass blame to the system or to anyone else, but only to worry and concentrate our efforts on what's going on right here, because our time is better spent worrying what's going on within, within our community. I'm hopeful for some change at the state level as it relates to these issues. I'm not saying that the total juvenile system needs to be rehabilitated, but I believe personally that there should be a greater penalty for breaking into either locked or unlocked cars. There needs to be. That needs to stand alone by itself. And until it does, and until there's a greater punitive action taken by the legislature, this will continue. This most certainly will continue. We could put, you know, 200 cops on the street, we'd have probably a better chance of solving a greater number, but that's, if there's nothing on the reverse side to remind the child in the best interest of the child that this is not smart, it will continue. You know, it's the hot stove theory. If you put your hand on the stove and it's not hot, you're going to keep doing it until you get burnt one time and then you probably might not do it again. That, this is where we are and it's becoming increasingly dangerous. The incident I spoke of a while ago where a neighboring town had a very similar incident like we did with the home being entered and the cars being stolen, Hartford made an arrest on that and took a juvenile out of the car with a stolen loaded 45 pistol in his belt. He was 14. So this is not a joke, you know? This, this is serious, it's, it's potentially dangerous. I'm not saying it always is, but this is no joke. We're looking for some, law enforcement is looking for some support on the backside of this issue, of this issue that we can assist with. We're pretty good at what we do, we can assist with it.
Thank you, and I'm glad you, you finished your statements the way you did, because the reason I ask this, frankly, well, I look at this and what can I do? So what can I do? Public is appealing to us as a town council as they are appealing to the administration and to you in many ways. And the last thing someone wants to hear is, oh, I can't do anything about it. Or they don't, or worse, they don't want to hear, you know, I'll try this, I'll try that, knowing full well nothing's going to happen. So what can I truly do independently and as a group? And I look at it, it's probably two, really two things we can do. One, we can support administrative actions, if you will, financially. We vote on the budget. So we can support physical changes, if you will, increasing your funding, if it's asked for, if it's justified. We can do that. We can't initiate it, but we can do that. The only other thing we can do is, is in some way advocate, you know, whether we independently or as a group, appeal to the legislature for something. That's why I asked that. I mean, and that's honest, that's all we can do. We can't pass laws that are going to make anything change. So if I want to try to do something, utilize my position to be even a small bit of help, you know, what kind of, what kind of, what kind of actions can I ask for when I call my state legislatures, when I call the governor's office and ask for things? So that's why I asked that. And, and it needs to be reasonable and it needs to also be effective. Again, we don't want feel-good measures. I like the way you said, you respect the fact that, you know, juveniles, you can lock them up, but, you know, we don't want them back, let's try to, so it sounds to me like it's really, it has, is everything else? Is it more a matter of, of resources, more resources needed? And we hear that all the time and it's the last thing the state has, is more resources. So I, you know, I'll give it a lot of thought, there's things I want to advocate for. And when I go, when I ask, or even if the town council chose to make a resolution requesting something, we were doing something that could potentially reap, you know, a benefit that's meaningful to you, your job and to the community. The last thing I had was, when we discussed staffing, is there any data of any sort? Because you know, it's all about data, right? Is there any more data that, any data that you would be able to provide now or in the future that could correlate increased staffing, increased patrols directly to relief to the community regarding these particular types of transact, you know, activities, if you will? Transgressions is the word I was looking for.
So certainly adding staffing will help that. It can only help that. Last year, we took a total of 26,000 some odd calls for service, 17. Eighteen, we took 33,400. It's busy. So I think we're doing a better job with this new system that this board has approved for us, our new cat and RMS system. I think we're doing a better job of, of capturing call volume in the proper way. But if you look at the call volume itself in this key area of Thesfrom Auto, that's, that's one of the drivers in those numbers, right? So staffing would certainly help. You know, our, our management model of looking at patterns in this case, and John will tell you, it's enough to drive you crazy because there are no patterns. You know, these groups come into our town from the Cheshire border one night, Cheshire will let us know, we'll move resources over there, they're now, they're in our community, that now they're back down in that lower, the north end of Hampden on the lower Tuttle Avenue side down there, then they're in Hampden, and then the next night they're coming in from North Branford. And North Branford is on the hotline telling us that they've had some incidents, we move our resources over there and there is absolutely no pattern. And the only way to defeat some of that is to saturate more of the town with more of our people. And that's merely a staffing issue.
That's, that's, that's a matter of patrol.
Patrol.
Patrol. Having people out there to.
Preventative patrol.
Be on the road more, to see more and try to interdict more. That's what that's about.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Luterno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming tonight. Your comments have been good. I want to thank the Wallingford Resident Crime Watch Group for coming. You know, we covered a lot of territory tonight. We covered a lot about staffing, additional staffing and what we can do. I think the frustration level that you brought forward is the core problem. And the core problem, and Counselor Testa started this conversation and it's where I want to jump in. We can have a lot more resources and we should. We can catch a lot more people, which we should. The frustration is what happens to them. And Lieutenant, you brought up a good point. You tried to talk to one of these individuals and the arrogance of that individual, I can just imagine how that went down. Wouldn't talk to you. You know, and these are not adults. These are not worldly adults. These are worldly kids. When you get a kid that you catch or another department catches, a 14-year-old with a 45 caliber handgun in their belt, that's serious. But what happens? What happened to that 14-year-old? He's probably right back out on the street right now. Sure, you took the gun away, not, I'm sorry, not you, the department that caught him took the gun away, you had to, can't give it back to him. The way things are going, maybe that'll happen at some point, but you, you can, you can set the tone in the communities to catch, we can catch, we can catch, we can catch. But the resources aren't there on the other end. What to do with these kids? Chief, you had brought up, which I didn't realize, you got to bring them to Bridgeport and that's if there's a bed down there. What do you do if there's not? You just got to turn them loose? So, you know, believe it or not, once upon a time I was a kid and I remember what I used to get away with, and it was a different time. I can't even imagine today what's out there in the community, what they know and what they don't know. They know what buttons to push, they, how far they can go and what they can get away. So basically, they're living in a society with no rules in their age group. When they become 21, 18, 21, yeah, there's rules and it's different because they get handled different and they know that. And sometimes the street gangs or whatever they're working with or the groups they're working with, it's the adults that control these kids to do these more serious break-ins or home invasions. Because they know they're just, it's a revolving door, they can go back out. I think with the frustration, I give you a lot of credit. I, I don't, I don't know if I could sit in your department and be able to do that. I, I, it just, how do you catch somebody, catch them doing something wrong, breaking the law and you know, you got to let them go? It's, it's just amazing. I would like to see more of the crime resident groups in Wallingford and throughout the state, maybe come together more, you know, in a big, a bigger group, have some of the departments come together as a bigger group and go to the legislature and say, look, guys, you got to change this. You know, we're, we're spending, we're spending our resources catching and all that's, the court system is doing is helping us release. So this is a catch and release situation. They know it, the kids know it. We got to stop it. And I, you know, how do we do that? Like I said, I, I, I think the only way we can do it is we got to come together as one big group, as one big group and go to the legislature. And, and we're fortunate tonight, we have one of these people sitting with us, listening to this and hopefully we'll take it back to Hartford and say, yeah, we got to do something. We, we've got a serious, serious problem. It's not going to get better. If anything, it's going to get worse. So I, I, you know, going back to earlier conversations with resources and, and extra officers and, and all of that, you know, over the years, as long as you've been here, Chief, I've, I've supported you and I continue, continually will, your department. So you need more, you need more guys? Absolutely. You need more cars? Absolutely. But we give you more mousetraps, we're catching the mice, but we're letting them go. We got to stop. And, and, and that's where, we can't do it here in town. We're not going to do it up here, you're not going to do it, they're not going to do it. But the legislature can. They're the only ones that can set the top laws. They're the ones that can say, okay, this isn't working, the juvenile system's got to change, we need another facility besides Bridgeport, we need one up here. Merton, Wallingford, Southington, someplace local. And hopefully it's not a forever thing. Once the word gets out on the street that, hey, you know, it's, it's not going to be pleasant, we're not going to be a revolving door anymore, maybe some of this will stop. It's like anything else, if there's no rules, there's no difference than adults. If you have an area that's habitual stop signs, people go through stop signs. If they don't get caught, they're going to go through the stop signs. So the laws are put there and, and maybe that's a poor analogy, I don't know, but the, the point being is if, if there's rules, I know when I drive my car on the road, there's rules. There's rules. And if there were no rules, well, then it would be different, then everybody would be driving down Center Street at 100 miles an hour. But there are rules and these kids have got to know there's rules. So it, it's a bigger problem. It's, it's a bigger problem than, than we're, what we're going to be able to fix tonight. But I think we have to keep at it. We can't give up, we got to keep at it and, and hopefully the legislature will, will hear us. So thank you.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
To your staff and, you know, thank you for everything that you do for us. So I have proposed in Hartford that we roll back what was done a few years ago. I did meet with Minority Leader Claritas today and I believe that that proposal will be adopted by the Republican Caucus as a caucus bill. You know, the whole, the issue is, you know, can we get the other side of the aisle to hear the cries of not just this town, but every other town? You know, I know in the audience tonight, we have not only you, we have a police officer who lives in our town and serves a different community. And I know that that community is having just as many problems. Chief, you were asked a question about a satellite office and I know like we have the Cook Hill Firehouse, which I think is vacant. Has it been considered, because I know, you know, one of the problems is traversing, getting across Route 5, you know, when you got all the cars over here, unless you have a car that's patrolling in that area, you know, wouldn't it be of assistance to you if you were able to operate out of a facility like that and have two or three cars that are stationed out of there? I mean, is that something that you're considering thinking about?
Yes, so to answer your question, kind of backing into it a little bit, as you know, the town is right in the middle of a significant two-way radio improvement project. Cook Hill Firehouse is going to become the prime site for that system. And I say prime site, it's the highest elevation that we have in town that we have a tower on. The tower that's there now is due to be replaced and the reason that that is going to become the prime site is because that tower site out there is the only tower site that can see our tower at Tower Drive, not to confuse you. And that there will come back to the station and then out to the lower southeast end of town. So we've done a lot of improvements to, I guess what I'm trying to say is we've done a lot of improvements to that building in anticipation of our needing to put a tremendous amount of gear inside there for this radio project. The apparatus floor, if you're familiar with that building, is currently filled with a lot of equipment that the Department of Public Works winters over. The day room, we've shut the heat off and the water off because there's no need for it, but it certainly could be turned back on. Running a second facility like that would only require some minor upkeep, but really then you have to supervise resources out of two areas, police headquarters and then up there. So we do everything we can throughout the day and John will say probably throughout the night to leave our resources in the area they're supposed to be in, because it takes a long time, as you know, to travel from one side of town to the other. So working out of there is, wouldn't be a difficult proposition. It's, it's a building that's in tremendous shape. It is due to become a significant part of our radio project, so we'll be there quite often managing that. It does have women's and men's showers because it was the firehouse, obviously. So it's, it's halfway to something that we could use already and it wouldn't take long to get there. But we would have to supervise staff out of there, which then equates to having to add potentially more supervisory staff. And we should have more. It, it's my intent to put a third sergeant on the 4 to 12 shift so that there's always a sergeant on the road with. so that there's always a sergeant on the road with his or her officers. That's not true on some nights. The shift commander's running the operation from the building, and the officers are, um, scattered throughout towns in their zones without a road boss, which is what we call supervisor, out there with them. And I wanna put a sup, another supervisor on four-to-twelve to make sure that there is always somebody out there. But that is another body from patrol, essentially. Um, and we would whittle that down even one more body. So we need to, to grow the whole, um, agency overtime incrementally with the eye on, um, increasing our supervisory staff. But to answer your question, we could work out of there very easily.
Um, and we're halfway through the year generally. Where are you on overtime?
Right now, as of this morning, I'm running about, um, so we're fifty-seven percent through, and I've burned, my burn rate is right around forty-five and a half percent. So we're right where we should be. We generally pick up a little bit of, um, credit in that line, if you will, this time of the year, but holiday vacations are over, more people are back to work. Um, and we generally run pretty well through Easter, and then the vacations start to pick up again.
And, and I would also expect that the need for overtime, I mean, as the weather gets warmer, um, incidents and complaints escalate, and therefore, you know, the need for officers would be increased in the springtime as opposed to what's usually the winter now.
Yeah. With this problem that we're talking about tonight, um, we've put from time to time more officers on midnights to help John's efforts. Um, but that's not every night. Tonight, I think they're gonna run eight cars, which is good, with its, with a road boss and a shift commander, so that's, that's a good crew. Um, I'd like to be able to do that every night, but we would quickly exhaust that, that overtime line. Because within that is not only these things we're talking about, but the parades and the road races and, um, extended tours and callbacks for court and, um, some other things like that that I really can't, from any time to time, put my finger on trying to determine how much are we gonna use? Because it's, if it's anything, it's inconsistent.
And what is, and I think you and I talked about this about a year ago. When we have, um, and it, it seems there's been a, um, an escalation, or at least more attention given to, uh, drug arrests. The forfeiture situation, which you could possibly use assets uh, rolling into putting more officers on the street. Can you just, how is that working? How does it work?
Sure, so, um, we have two separate lines. One's a federal asset forfeiture, one is state asset forfeiture. I currently have one detective assigned full-time to the DEA Drug Diversion Task Force on the opioid issue. Um, I have another detective assigned on a part-time basis to the Secret Service working fraud cases. Um, so the asset forfeiture comes in, um, on the federal side, we get a percentage of what the forfeiture is divided equally amongst all the members of the task force. So if the case jumps off in Wallingford, we get a little bit more because we're kind of the hometown. Um, but if we take part in something going on in North Haven, per se, um, we get an equal share of whatever the forfeiture is. Um, on the state side, um, we take, we don't take, we're granted seventy percent of the forfeiture. The state takes thirty percent. Um, and most of those monies come from, um, drug cases that our own, um, narcotics officers work here locally. Um, a couple thousand dollars here, a couple thousand dollars there. Um, if we seize a car, we'll use it till it's burnt, and then we'll sell it. Um, and those monies recovered from that will come back to the state asset forfeiture account, um, because it is forfeiture. Um, presently, I, I'm gonna, um, come before you probably in another month to five weeks to move money out of asset forfeiture for the pistol program that I think you're intimately familiar with, Craig. Um, we're actually gonna spend money twice to buy pistols once. The law department is doing yeoman's work and recapturing our expenses from another manufacturer, but that's, that's not, we're not whole just yet. I need to move to a different, uh, pistol. And I'm gonna request that, that money be taken from asset forfeiture. Interesting is I can buy the pistols out of asset forfeiture, but I can't buy ammunition out of there. It's prohibited. So I can buy cars.
Why can't you buy ammo?
It's just prohibited by the nature of the asset forfeiture program.
Is that state or federal?
Both. I can use some of it for training. Um, we purchased the next-gen system out of asset forfeiture. You approved that last year. Um, on any given day, there might be thirty or forty thousand dollars in each account. I understand that our DEA task force member, um, this case is a little bit old, but they seized almost a million dollars in Bitcoin. Um, and there's some sense of how they're gonna get rid of that and turn it into cash. Um, and I'm impatiently waiting for that sale.
So when your department does a drug arrest, and there's a ten-thousand-dollar vehicle that's seized as a, as, you know, being part of the bad activity, um, by virtue of what does the state get thirty percent of that?
I'm not sure that on the sale of a vehicle that there's any, um, that there's any return to the state. Talking about just cash.
Okay, by what vehicle does the state get thirty percent of the cash if they did no, none of the investigation?
So by state law, um, when we seize any assets, we're required to fill out a very formal packet of information. Um, that gets forwarded off to the state. Certainly, while the case is ongoing in court, we don't hear about asset forfeiture. At the time the case is disposed of by the judge, um, there is an order of either to return the property to the rightful owner, which happens quite often, or, um, we're given the cash minus the thirty percent.
Okay, and then, um, that's generally, yeah, just, I mean, I'm on it. I mean, two of my committees this session are public safety and judiciary, so it's gonna come before me at some point, so I'm trying to do what I can. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, thank you for your efforts. Yeah, I'm getting the impression that there's support on the council to probably add more officers come budget time. Um, I'm not sure how many ultimately that will be, but I'm getting the impression that there's some support. Um, but on some level, you could triple the officers per thousand ratio, and you're not gonna stop all this. Uh, it, it will be great to, to be able to make greater efforts, uh, on a preventative level, but, um, you know, there's been talk about this societal issue we have, you know? And the, the one example of the child or juvenile who was caught here and then caught weeks later in Hartford with a forty-five, that's a young person on a spiral outward pattern, um, which is both destructive to himself and the victims in his path. Um, and that's, that's something that needs to be addressed at a higher level, and there's been talk of, of supporting that sort of movement. So I, I hope the discussion in this room, um, will lead to solutions uh, that we can all get behind on various levels. So thank you for being part of that conversation. I'm certainly grateful. And at this point, I am gonna go out to the public. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Jessica Teta, thirty, Bayberry, Wallingford. Um, so I'm one of the representatives from the Wallingford Crime Watch Group, and just from the looks in this room of us sitting here, we are, I, I am personally blown away by your response to the proposal. You have gone over it line by line by line by line, and Chief Wright has responded line by line. We did not expect that, and I think the overall support of our efforts and our, this is really a grassroots effort on what we're trying to accomplish here, and it has very much been a collaborative effort. Um, we understand that there are budgetary restrictions, limitations. Um, so I, I just would like to formally thank the town council members. Council Morganstein has been very supportive of this. Fishbein has been very supportive of this. He's come to one of our meetings. Um, we're gonna continue to hold these monthly meetings, um, as a resident group. We are gonna, coincidentally, the way we had it scheduled before, always ran on your council meetings, but we're gonna try and work with the park rec to change the frequency of it and the date so we can invite you, and you can come to some of these resident meetings so they don't conflict with this meeting. Um, and I, I, I would feel that the next intention is to invite Governor Lamont and, and, um, Governor, Lieutenant Governor Bisowitz to attend a meeting and be part of this grassroots effort. Whether they come or not, I'm not so sure, but if they can send a representative, um, uh, you know, Councilman Fishbein, if you can help support that effort to have some pressure from actual residents and state taxpayers to kind of push through some of this juvenile reform. Um, I am a social worker by training. I work day in, in, day out to address poverty in our community. Um, so I have been in these kids' homes. I have talked to these kids. I have been in jails with them. So I am completely understanding of the things that these kids are facing um, and what the police are up against when it comes to their pretty much blatant disregard for authority, for, you know, repercussions, if you will. And there's so many systemic societal issues that contribute to the delinquency of a minor. Um, and again, as a social worker, soon-to-be parent, um, I understand that these kids need other people in their life. And yes, there are punitive things that we all really wanna make sure that they are held accountable, but the services for some of these kids, um, still also play a very important role. Um, so I don't wanna dismiss the privacy and confidentiality things that need to happen for some of these kids, but can there be further reform on the repercussions? Um, and, um, the continuing cycling in and cycling out of the system just needs to stop, and some of these kids need to be held accountable, um, in some fashion. Um, so I, I just really wanted to thank you, everyone, for your support of the proposal. Um, we know some things may have been unrealistic. Some things, you know, um, are, are possible, which we're hoping. Um, and it sounds like there is a fair amount of support here, so we thank you. We will be inviting you to all the further meetings, so we encourage you to come and just connect with your constituents, um, because it goes a long way. Um, that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions for us? Okay, well, we will certainly keep the town clerk informed of when these meetings are. I send out monthly notifications, and we do minutes and everything. Um, so we hope that you can attend them. Um, and we do hope to, like, push this up a little bit higher and get some of, you know, um, the state representatives to come to our meetings as well, um, hopefully with your support as well. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public here speak?
Tracy Gahooli, nine Hayledge Court. Um, I had this whole thing written out, but everything was addressed. I'm glad I don't have to read it. I do wanna thank everybody for your support with our concerns. I feel confident that we are gonna be moving forward. I enjoy learning a great deal about, it's not just two officers, it's the locker room, it's the uniforms, it's the cars. My eyes were opened today, and I appreciate learning. I will continue to come to the town council meetings, and I just wanna thank you for your support and your, uh, attention.
Thank you. Mr. Lou.
Thank you. Jared Liu, fifty-nine Curtis Avenue. Um, thank you to the chief and to the officers. Thank you to the council for having this meeting. Um, I, I wanna pick up on something that, uh, really echoed with me with where the chief had left off, which is frustration. Uh, you know, I, I certainly see a tremendous amount of frustration among the public, and, uh, unfortunately, I can't be quite as diplomatic here. I'm incredibly frustrated with the town council. Uh, you know, I hear, you know, the chief saying that the staff or that the force is fully staffed, um, but also that we're seventeen officers short of where we'd like to be. I hear a proposal about notification to the public across social media or across, uh, opt-in text, and the response is that, well, uh, you know, we don't have the officers for the communication to do that. So, you know, I, I think he is doing everything appropriate to say, you know, we are doing what we can, excuse me, with the resources we have. And, uh, you know, he is taking a tremendous amount of personal responsibility to say, here's what we can do on a town level. And you hear the questions coming back saying, well, it's the state's problem. You know, we've been handed this problem. It's society's problem. This is, you know, sort of what's happening on a larger scale. And I really just would like to hear some more from our council on what we're going to do on a local level. I have to hand kudos to Councilor Marone, who started the conversation a few months ago, asking the mayor to be more transparent in the budget process. Have this conversation. Here's the issue, all right? We are seeing an increase in crime. We're seeing people incredibly frustrated and scared. These, uh, what was car break-ins have now turned into home invasions. These are scary things. Here is your issue, right? Have the conversation. Encourage the administration to be transparent with you from a budget perspective, instead of pointing the finger the other way. So I really have to say, I'm incredibly frustrated because now is the time to start the budget process. And kudos for starting that early, but this is where the leadership steps in on your behalf to continue that conversation, and I hope you'll pick it up ahead of budget season.
Mr. Morganstein.
Good evening, Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. I wanna thank, uh, the chief and his staff for what they do. I think we've seen over the last few years, and it's not just our police, it's other institutions too. It's whether it's our education system. We ask our teachers, our social workers, to take more and more on. We ask our police to take on an opioid epidemic. We ask them to police our schools. We ask them to pick up when we see these car break-ins. And we keep on asking. And they've done that to their best of their ability, but it's also up to us, our leaders, our community, to ask for the resources to properly get them to a point where we ask them, but things break. And it sounds like we're getting to a point where they won't say it directly, but, and the community is saying it, that things might be breaking. And the challenge is, is how do we do that with limited resources? And it's not easy. It's certainly not easy, because we've got a lot of things that we're looking at. What I'd like to say, though, that it's really positive, though, is that we talk about society and its ills, but I'd also like to point out what's good. What's good are these people that formed and got together as neighbors, as friends, as community, and got together. I saw that happen with the Coalition for a Better Wallingford. We could talk about incarceration. We could talk about the justice system. But what makes for healthy communities is people, and people talking to each other, people holding their leaders accountable, asking for things, and for those leaders to respond. Those are the things that are our challenges. People are speaking clearly, and again, you need our help too. We can't just put it on you alone. It has to come from us, and people need to be involved in that. So that's really all I wanted to say. Uh, chief, I just had one quick, uh, question for you. You cite, I think it was like a hundred and eighty. Has that been a continuous pattern, or is there even a season of this? Or does it, with the weather change? Have you seen any letdown in it as we've gotten into a different season? Or has it just continued unabated?
No, it, it's pretty consistent across all four quarters. So in twenty eighteen, in the first quarter, we had fifty-five incidents, forty-five in the second quarter, forty-three in the third, and forty in the, in the fourth. Um, the past two weeks, it's been fairly quiet. Um, but putting a, a reason as to why that is, I, I couldn't, um, give you.
Yeah, so we're really not at a point where we can maybe see if there's that sort of pattern, but so far, what you've seen doesn't necessarily indicate that yet. But it's just, uh, something I was curious about. There's also something about the allocation of resources, and I won't say the business or, but you, your forces- or, but you, your forces inordinately entering calls at certain businesses that take up a lot of time?
Yes, sir.
And is there anything we could do in asking those businesses or what is happening there that causes you guys there so often that our resources get stretched in that way?
So we pride ourselves on responding to every single solitary call for service. Um, there are a lot of agencies that have gone to a telephone system for some minor complaints and, and, and to us, you become there a report taker and, and not an investigator. So we respond to each and every call. I will tell you that I met with the management of the location that I mentioned a while ago and interestingly enough, as we're talking about this issue, the town's violent crime rate does not trip the percentage that the national chain recognizes as a need for a police officer on overtime to be at the location, which I found to be an interesting conversation. So, um, if we don't manage that, uh, location and the stores that are around that location, that will quickly get out of control. Um, I'm continually on the phone with planning and zoning about the camping that goes on in that parking lot. It's prohibited by their use. Um, there is a very violent video, if you haven't seen it, from the Cottonwood, Arizona Walmart location where, um, a traveling religious family was using the parking lot as kind of a home base and traveling out from there throughout the day or over the course of a week. And it actually turned into, um, one night, a melee in the parking lot where police officers were shot. A lot of people were injured and, um, I, I, I guess what I'm really trying to say is that requires a lot of our attention. Um, and I don't know where we can stem that off by not going there for certain things.
Is there any obligation for this corporation or any corporation to provide their own security and do some of their own policing?
I will tell you that-
Or as good corporate sys-, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt, or as good corporate citizens to take some of that responsibility?
So I, they do, you know, to give them credit, right? The reason we're down there so often is their loss prevention is very good at what they do. Um, I could tell you that the loss prevention at Home Depot is very good at what they do. So, um, just a couple of weeks ago, um, I just happened to be in an area stop and shop for, um, this cereal shop lifter, I guess, that had been hitting stop and shops all over Connecticut. They recognized him when he came in, so there we were in the parking lot and as expected, out the door he came with a cart full of groceries without paying. Um, and the foot chases on, we chased him all the way across the parking lot, through Taco Bell, around the bank into Route Five. Um, and when you think about it, it's a, it's a cartload of groceries, but it's product owned by the store that when I go there, I pay for it. So, um, we're busy in that area and there is a good, um, level of loss prevention in those stores, there has to be. Um, and we respond to that.
So you feel that they've done whatever is responsible that they can, that we couldn't ask them for more at this point?
Well, I asked them to consider that extra duty officer, but I, I don't see that that's going to happen.
Thank you. And then, uh, on a lighter note, I want to compliment you on your season's greeting ad with the other chiefs. I was very impressed, but I'd like to see you get more dialogue in the future. Thank you.
Ten Forest, twenty-one Ridge Road. Um, just want to thank you guys for, it seems like you guys have, are pretty supportive behind at least the community group that we have. Um, as far as the two hundred and twenty K cost to add two officers, um, did you guys ever take into consideration some type of like reserve officer where it would be more of a volunteer, uh, maybe not paid? Um, and also I think, you know, just standing behind everybody that, and the group that we have that, you know, I haven't been there as, you know, religiously as the rest of them have, I'm pretty new to the area. Um, but legislatively, it's got to, something's got to change because you, like you said, it's just you could put a hundred officers on, you know, twenty-four hours a day and the revolving door, these juveniles, if you will, uh, you know, a person wouldn't consider them a juvenile carrying a forty-five, a fourteen, but, uh, as a kid, for them to commit a crime, to then be out two days later committing the same crime, uh, something's got to change. Uh, and it's not to say that any of you guys, you know, any of the counselors, the chairman, anybody here is able to put that forth, but together as a community, with all of your guys backing, um, something's got to, something's got to be given, you know, before it turns for the worst. Um, you know, Connecticut having one of the highest, I don't know the statistics behind it, uh, concealed carry, kids can't be walking into, you know, people's homes or taking people's property, you know, like you said, the, the guy ran off with a, a cart full of groceries. When you go in, you pay for it. Everything I've got, I pay for. Um, you know, I just don't want to see it turn for the worst. Um, you know, we're certainly doing what we can do on our end as far as, you know, cameras and whatnot and, you know, just community watches, but certainly, you know, as power numbers, as a group, I think something's got to give legislatively and if, you know, if we can have your guys backing, if you guys, you know, like, just like Jessica said, you're more than welcome to attend the meetings, um, something's got to give. Uh, but just to, just to touch, you know, touch base on the reserve, I don't know if it was ever considered, um, but, you know, some insight would be helpful.
So as it relates to part-time police officers or auxiliary, um, state law requires that anyone acting in an official police capacity be post-certified, so they would have had to have gone through the academy, um, at one time. I know that the shoreline towns employ part-time police officers throughout the summer season who are full-time officers, um, in other places, and I understand that works out, um, quite well. Um, but I think what we've talked about over the past hour or so is the need for full-time officers, um, to swell our ranks.
David de Blazi, fourteen Tammy Hill Road. Um, so the New Haven Police Department does, uh, weekly comp stat meetings, which are, um, they, basically the public that are concerned in the areas, they will go in and the police will give them an update about what kind of crime is happening in their area. Um, Chief Wright, um, said something about a daily, um, update to the public about what happened the night before. You know, I was wondering if you would be supportive of something like a weekly meeting with the concerned citizens, just giving a kind of a weekly update?
I'm not opposed to that. Um, I'm not so sure it needs to be weekly. Um, you can come in, uh, Dave, at any time and we'd give you the, um, data that you're looking for. I hold a, um, Monday morning briefing every Monday morning with my command staff, um, to review what went on, um, in the past week and what our plans are for the, for the current week on that Monday. Um, and this is the topic from, uh, John every Monday. Um, so I can tell you that it's on the front burner with us, it has been for quite a while. Um, I just don't know, um, if a regular briefing to the community, um, every so often would be more than likely more beneficial than, um, something once a week. Um, but I'm not opposed to that. Um, and our, you know, we're available, right? So, um, I think you'll, I know a lot of people in here know me pretty well. I'm in the building around seven fifteen in the morning, I'm there till five thirty or six o'clock at night because that's just what the job is. So I'm available, my staff knows how to get ahold of me, um, when I'm not there. Um, but we're more than willing to provide you and please excuse my back too, um, provide you the information that you're looking for at any time.
I appreciate that. I also wanted to talk, um, I know it's not time yet because it's coming up on the agenda, is there, um, automatic license plate reader system that they're proposing. I'm in full support of that. I think that's going to help the town tremendously with the amount of unregistered and uninsured vehicles. We have an influx of vehicles that come in from, you know, surrounding towns and even, you know, people from this town and it's a really public safety hazard and it could cut down on the crime at Walmart and maybe cut down the calls for that and everything because, you know, Walmart is a big, uh, it's a big burden on the police department for theft calls and things like that. And, you know, vehicles getting struck and them taken off evading and them not being held responsible and you just end up suing your own, um, insurance company because the person that have insurance is just a public safety nightmare. So I, I support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. If there, uh, is no further public comment, then come on up.
Hi, my name is Janine Connolly, I live at forty-eight Kingsland Avenue. I just want to say, I'm blown away, you guys are awesome. Thank you for listening to us, um, and spending so much time on this subject. Again, so proud to be a citizen of this town. It's a great town. It's a remarkable town and you guys have been great, very supportive. Um, they tried to steal my car, um, it rolled down the driveway, but it's a six-speed, so I don't know if they could drive standard. My husband was in the kitchen having a cup of coffee at the time, um, he was going hunting. They took his crossbow and it could have just gotten really ugly and it didn't. So, um, I think it got, would, it could have gotten worse, but because he, you know, they saw him and they ran. So my point to this is there is some fear, they're still juveniles, they're still young, they're still worried about getting caught. So increasing the police would be immensely, I mean, what you guys have just decided on that is just like awesome that we're going to get more police officers, very excited about that. But as I was sitting here listening to Council Fishbein talk about the, um, firehouse over on Cook Hill Road, I started to wonder, is there any possible way that you could either cross-train or combine the fire department with the police department? It was just an idea. Um, again, good idea, bad idea, just throwing out there. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I guess we'll ponder your idea about cross-training police and fire and that the manual transmission is the new anti-theft device. Thank you very much. And if there's no further comment, we will be moving on to the next item and, uh, chief, you won't be moving.
Thank you, chief.
We have a motion on item eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a bid waiver in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars to SecureWatch twenty-four to purchase and install the LPR system for the police department.
Moved in second and chief, what do you have for us?
Um, about a month and a half ago, we were notified that we were eligible for, um, a ten thousand dollar justice administration grant. I've been looking to purchase an LPR for some time. Um, I sought two MOUs, one from the state police and one from the Department of Motor Vehicle, which the mayor, um, had to sign. Um, and then got a, um, a quote from SecureWatch twenty-four, which is a company that, um, doesn't manufacture, uh, LPRs, but is a representative for, um, a specific model called Gentech. Um, I want to leverage our ability to get onto the, uh, database of the state police. Um, they are only allowing Gentech systems onto their backbone and they are working exclusively with SecureWatch twenty-four. By doing so, um, by going to the state backbone, it will save us from having to buy our own server and our, and our own database and manage that. Um, and I have the price between five and seven thousand dollars worth of savings by doing that. Um, and the proposal before you this evening is to allow me to go ahead and enter into an agreement with SecureWatch to have a two-camera system mounted onto one of our cruisers.
Thank you, chief. Counselor Levin?
Thank you, uh, chief, thank you again. Um, not going to lie, the first time I read about the proposal, the big brother flag went off in my head. Um, and, and we've chatted a little bit and, and I thought it more through too, um, and, and the database exists anyway, um, our participation or not, I guess it's, it'll help collect Wallingford, uh, as somebody from the audience mentioned earlier. Um, there's an opportunity there to help flag some, some issues in town. Um, but I guess what I, what I'm going to get to, to, to the point, to, to Knottman's words, uh, like you said earlier, is that I basically, so I trust you, uh, and I believe in you and if, uh, you've done a lot of great work and if you think this is the route you want to go and you just said you've actually been thinking about this for a couple of years now and was not aware of that, um, then I do support this. Um, and I will put aside all my reservations, um, and put them all before you. So if it gets really bad, I'm going to blame you, but other than that, I'm good. Thank you.
So I have the same reservations, you know, I'm a citizen as well. Um, and Craig and I had a, a nice conversation before the meeting. Um, but I will tell you this, everything that we do in our most effective, uh, sincere manner is, is lawful, um, meaningful to the mission, which is protecting this community, um, and that which has to be measured. And never, and I sit here before you and promise you, would we ever, um, use the data that's collected by this system for that which is not a legitimate law enforcement purpose? I understand certainly Counselor Fishbein's concern about those that are just minding their own business, lawfully traveling along their way, that this system will capture a timestamp and place that they happen to be at the time the LPR went by. Um, but like I said a minute ago, I, I, um, implore you to trust me that never will we use that data for anything other than a legitimate, lawful, uh, criminal justice purpose.
Thank you. And I thought of one thing when you were talking there, will this vehicle be marked any different or is it an external device or is inside?
Cameras are external, um, they're very small, they sit one on top of the light bar facing forward and one on top of the light bar facing to the rear.
Not, not necessarily, well, okay, thank you.
Certainly. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, chief, just want to first go over the memo. It, it contemplates in the first paragraph, a transfer of funds from Nucor?
Yes.
And where procedurally is that transfer? Because I didn't see it, um, any documents. Is that to happen in the future?
Yes. Yep, I didn't provide the documents to you. The, um, Nucor Steel Corporation has a golf tournament annually. Um, every so often, we are the recipient of a portion of the funds from the golf tournament. This year, um, we were in fact the recipient and they presented us with a check, uh, for fifteen thousand dollars, which has come before you, um, a couple of months ago for acceptance.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I basically remember that. So that's just sitting in an account to be appropriated?
Uh, under, under our donation account.
Okay. So if we were to approve what's before us tonight on a subsequent agenda, there will be this actual transfer using the, the correct numbers and all that stuff?
The grant for ten thousand dollars and the remaining money's out of this donation account.
Okay. And then your memo also references two separate memorandums of understanding, um, with, I, I guess between the mayor and the state police and the mayor and the DMV?
Yes, sir.
And your memo indicates that those have already been executed?
Yes, sir.
And by what authority does that happen? You know, let's say we reject this, then are those MOUs having to do with anything else or?
No, no, it's specifically for, um, the LPR, uh, uh, system.
Okay, and those MOUs have not come before us?
No.
Okay, I guess to the law department, uh, procedurally, how does that happen? I thought we're supposed to, or maybe we're not, supposed to approve those things before the mayor signs them? I, I don't know.
That would be an administrative function for us to be able to cooperate with the state.
So sometimes we have MOUs that, um, we authorize you, mayor, to sign? I'm just trying to figure out what's the difference here. I've never seen something like this where, um, it, this calls for an action by us to allow the completion of the transaction and yet the executive branch has already signed the documents that sort of, I don't know, bind us because we don't have those MOUs before us. I don't-
Well, the legislative function is to provide the funding. Um, our agreement with the state, uh, similar to, um, uh, mutual aid agreements and other, other administrative issues are handled administratively through the, the mayor's office in our case or first selectman or wherever and, uh, that commits, uh, to the commu-, the community to participate with another political subdivision, but if there's not money, obviously, then this would not proceed. But the agreement has to be there with the state. The state wouldn't provide us the money if we were not agreeing to the terms under which they want to see, uh, access to their property or their database or whatever the issue might be.
So I get, when I was reviewing this, the one that- So I get, when I was reviewing this, the one that I thought was most akin to this is the mutual aid agreement that we entered into, or that we authorized that you entered into with Cheshire, where we had some sort of overlap, and we would mutually serve the police departments. That was a mutual aid agreement between two municipalities that the administration did not sign without our authorization. So I'm just trying to figure out the distinction here.
Well, there are different types of agreements. Some require legislative approval, and some do not.
And what dictates that?
Part state law and part regulatory requirements.
Okay. So then, Chief, and you alluded to it, you know, I'm concerned, I, my big brother flag has not dissipated here. You know, I guess at one end of the spectrum, we have no monitoring. At the other end of the spectrum, we have embedding chips in people's arms to, you know, to monitor where they're going. And that's the balance. It's, you know, it's somewhere between there. So I guess I'd be a little bit more comfortable, as we were discussing before the meeting, I had a case where Wallingford, you know, using NICIC inputted the data, and there was the West Haven had the wrong information. My guy got arrested. I ended up having to bring a federal lawsuit. All over this guy who was doing absolutely nothing illegal, was not suspected of doing anything illegal because of his license plate, he ends up in jail. What is your intended standard operating procedure with regard to the information for individuals that are scanned but not, are not wanted, are not driving a stolen vehicle? Their registration is appropriate. They're not criminal, so to speak?
So in order for the officer in the car to recognize a hit, if you will, on something, the plate, the registration, the fact that DMV's indicated there's no insurance, the person might be wanted, the person might be missing, Alzheimer's patients tend to drive away from their homes, they could be missing adults, silver alerts, unless someone, in this case, the state police, has loaded that information into the database. And to your point, you're just driving along, minding your own business. The system, although it is scanning your plate because it's looking for those things, the police officer would have no idea, because the system wouldn't notify him or her that there's an issue. So for all of you, and for me as well, there wouldn't be any hit on the system. Only when one of these previously loaded triggers, if you will, comes to light by the scan, that's when the indication is given to the officer that there's some issue with this plate.
So that's the present situation. But how do we prevent this system from being used to monitor the doings and the goings-on of law-abiding citizens? How are we to prevent that?
So I think, to your point, essentially, it is, right? Because it is scanning your plate. It is monitoring your activity at that moment in time, in that place, at that time. But without a qualifying and confirmed, I think is appropriate, confirmed hit, the officer wouldn't know that. So that system, or that database that is managed by the state, which is recording all of this data, is dumped on a routine basis. And I wouldn't want to say it goes away, but I mean, it's somewhere. And that's why I said a few minutes ago that we have every intent to use this in a lawful manner only. And there's no reason for us to access the database unless there's a legitimate law enforcement use. And you and I had a very brief discussion about the Oakdale shooting, and how important or nice it would have been, if you will, to have something like this in the parking lot that night, instead of having officers doing the best they could not to get run over by writing down all the plates of the people that were getting out of there as fast as they could. Those plates became key later on to identifying potential witnesses to what had occurred there.
But I guess, you know, and we had an issue, and I didn't know about, you know, cellphone triangulation, that departments, police departments, were tracking people's cellphones without a warrant in order to trace where they were going. And, you know, the argument was, we're looking for drug dealers and that kind of stuff. And we actually passed a statute last year that banned that. And I'm just, I'm just, because I, you know, I trust you. I don't trust every chief, you know? And you're not gonna be there forever. And that's, that's my concern.
Completely understand.
And I want you, I want you to have the tools so that you do the job. But I also am very concerned, so. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly. Counselor Marone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, frankly, I think the fears about this system falling into the wrong hands, or there's been some sort of Machiavellian plot to, you know, to track the public are a little bit overblown. You know, from the insurance side, I can tell you that I'm always staggered at the number of uninsured or unregistered vehicles that are on the roads. I think that's a major concern. I think if the system could track some of those down, I think it would make the town a lot safer for all the people that follow the rules, so to speak. Nothing would have really prevented the police from doing this in the past with the traditional means. As the chief highlighted, they stood outside of the Oakdale and wrote down the license plate numbers of the cars leaving. So I mean, you could really put an officer on every street corner if you wanted to, and you could keep track of everything that took place and put it in logs and, you know, file all that data. So I think that the discomfort here is really because this is an electronic means, and so we can do this a lot more efficiently in a lot shorter time. But this is traditional police work. It's always, it's been done for, you know, since the beginning of motor vehicle traffic. So I think the fears are a little bit overblown. I think that this, to me, seems like a great system that could potentially prevent crime, or maybe make some people think twice about passing through a town that had this potential system that would catch them if they knew that they were doing something that would get them flagged. So I think this is a great idea, and I'm glad we're pursuing this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Testa?
Thank you. Logan, Chief. Chief, is it, is it legal now for your officers to randomly just run a, run a plate that they happen to see on a car if they had no, any suspicion whatsoever that something was wrong?
Yes.
So they can do that anyway?
Yes.
So is that a common practice? It's like, or out there's just, what's the point? Just checking for people being legal, registered?
Yeah, so for motor vehicle violations, right? So not for people essentially being legal?
I didn't mean it that. I didn't, I was not referencing that.
Okay.
That's why I caught myself.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a part of the job that we, that we have great success with, right? To Counselor Marone's point of view, there are a lot of people driving around without insurance. Whether they can afford it or not, it's not my issue. It's the fact that they're driving around without insurance. So typically, yes, they can run the plate and query the information. But I know our guys were really busy, and they almost one-hundred percent of the time have a very definitive qualifying reason for doing so. Whether the plate's hanging by one screw, or the front windshield is cracked, and the vision might be impaired by the driver. They could run a plate in advance of a motor vehicle stop to see who they're dealing with before that they initiate the stop. And it's common, and it goes on.
I'm more or less questioning simply the human equivalent of a system seeing a plate and running it.
Yes, they can.
So that's the important thing to me, because we're touching on the constitutionality of it. Are you aware of any cases where the random running of a plate without any suspicion of wrongdoing was challenged as a violation of the Fourth Amendment?
I think Craig spoke to one just a few minutes ago. Yes, that is something I think that's challenged in a court of law at the time that a potential Fourth Amendment violation is being discussed, which usually is tied to something bigger. Many years ago, I was part of a case where we stopped a gentleman down on South Colony Road in the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot there for having an apparently expired insert. Remember the stickers, the inserts? Upon closer inspection, because the thing had been tethered, it really wasn't expired. But he was wanted in three different states. There was a stolen gun in a car, a bunch of counterfeit money, a hundred different credit cards, one in the name of a federal judge, I remember it very specifically. And that was challenged, you know, the legality of the stop was the center point at trial, because the car was legally registered. And what the court said was, no, the officer acting in a lawful manner in public with a legitimate law enforcement purpose made the motor vehicle stop. It wasn't my case. And, you know, our activity or our action was upheld by the court, challenged significantly. Trial went on for a long time.
Right. Well, it sounds like it was reasonable. That's my only concern, in that the random review of somebody's license plate can be considered, you know, an unlawful search, you know, under the Constitution. And that's where I hesitate. But I'm okay with this. I, not, you know, you've explained to me, you already have the ability, you have the right, your officers have the right to do that. So if a system is going to simplify, facilitate the ability to do more of it without tying up, you know, people's time, and you're gonna follow the same procedures you find otherwise, then, you know, I'm comfortable, you know, okaying you having this additional tool. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, two things. One, our earlier discussion, there's a direct correlation, I think, on that one incident. Another stolen vehicle was seen passing through the crime scene. Is that right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
And the check on it immediately told them that that vehicle is a problem, and hence there was interdiction that was possible. The other thing is, and there are certainly rights regarding not being improperly stopped, but let's keep in mind, being on the highway is not a constitutional right. That's a privilege. And to the extent that we broaden it to a constitutional right, it would be even more difficult to deal with juveniles who would be out there doing things that they shouldn't be operating, a thousand, fifteen-hundred-pound vehicle that obviously can kill, it can maim. That should be regarded. It's a serious crime to be operating a motor vehicle on a public highway where you don't have the proper credentials. So this helps us. It's a, it's a tool to be able to keep the streets safe, and as the added benefit of being able to quickly determine if there's a vehicle that shouldn't be there for reasons that we're told by the state police database.
Thank you. Counselor Letourneau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, I'm more interested in the nuts and bolts of this. You said it's going to be mounted on the light bar, and so it'll, it'll, there'll be a facing forward and also in reverse?
Yes, sir.
So an officer in their car on Route Five, it's gonna look at the car in front of them. Does it also look at the oncoming cars?
The system is designed to pick up the lane in front of you, and two lanes coming at you, up to two lanes coming at you, and then the vehicles directly behind you, and two lanes of vehicles traveling away from you, you know, in a perfect circumstance.
Okay, so this information is coming in to these units, and it's going into a, it's going into the database, and it's being processed. So the officer can keep driving, and what happens? Does it notify him on his?
Yes, yep, there's an alert on the computer.
Computer system that's in the car? And it'll alert and say where the car is? Is it going by? Is it in front of you?
Yes, it gives a direction where the scan took place, and then it would be up to the officer to make some sense of where the car currently is or isn't anymore, I guess.
How about a stationary car? I see a lot of cars in different areas of the town that are stationary, and, because obviously you guys can't be driving the whole shift, so. And they're parked, so will it pick cars up? So on, let's say, just Route Five, and you've got cars going back and forth. Officer's car, you know, is parked this way? Does it have to be parked at a certain angle? Or I'm just curious how this thing works.
It has to be parked at an angle that the camera can pick up, you know, the plate. I'll tell you, if you've ever traveled down the Berlin Turnpike on any occasion, in the area of Berlin, Newington, where all that comes together up there, they quite often are out there doing DUI checkpoints on the southbound side. If you've come through there, you'll notice that there's a cruiser parked right on the skip line, right on that white-dotted skip line. And as you're passing by, there's usually an officer in each lane. Then they let traffic free flow to relieve the backup. That cruiser that's parked in the middle has got an LPR in it. And as you're coming to a slow stop there, it's scanning everything that's coming through there. And I'm not sure what success they've had there, but I can probably imagine it's quite successful in removing either wanted persons, or finding missing persons, or finding silver alerts, or any number of things. So, but yes, the camera has to be able to pick up the plate.
I was just curious how it does that, and, you know, how it notifies the officer in the car, so. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Morgenstein?
Thanks again, Chief. So the discussion that we're having here is our town in particular. And while we might go wider with societal concerns and such, and of course, things can change in the future, I want to express my complete trust in you and your department. You are so frank with all of us and with your public, and I have zero concern that you or your officers are targeting certain groups. What you're targeting is the safety of this community, and I'm fully in support of this. And I think it's very worthwhile in this day and age to say that using technology for security is much more effective than old-fashioned techniques, walls, and the like. This is something that is not just, you know, eyeballing things. And we should be using the computers that we have to maximal effect. And again, just, you know, you're simple bringing up the lost elderly person, or the, you know, kidnapped victim, or something else. Benefit so, so much outweighs concern. And if in the future it is found that databases are being used differently, then let's address that in the future, and a bigger societal thing. This is Wallingford. I trust you with our public and fully endorse this. Thank you, Chief.
Any comments, questions from the public?
Forest 21 Ridge Road. The license plate readers that you speak of, the information that they obtain, does it just pertain to motor vehicle, or does it go above and beyond that based on the tag that the vehicle is tied to, the individual that the tag is tied to? Is it just motor vehicle, or is it on a more personal, say, child support, say, you know, any other, any other things that would be tied to you as the individual that has that vehicle registered?
So, yes and no. So it scans the plate to make sure that it's registered and has insurance. It scans the registered owner against the plate. It scans whether or not the vehicle has been reported stolen. Our system will scan for missing persons, attempt to locate, and wanted persons based on the plate. Now, whether if you're wanted for a warrant for failure to pay child support, then that would come as a hit, you know, if it's a valid warrant tied to the plate specifically. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbine?
She is.
Yep.
No.
Laughen?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Shurtel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Cervone?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Yes, it does. Thank you for all of your time tonight, Chief. Thank you for your support. Not a problem from here. Onto item nine.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to section one dash two hundred six D of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale and or leasing of property. And also, uh, sections one dash two two five F and section one, uh, dash six, uh, two hundred six B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the pending foreclosure matter of Town of Wallingford versus Denise Whitaker at all.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Kindly vacate the council chambers. Thank you. Called the meeting back to order as there are motion to come out of executive session.
I move we come out of executive session.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor of coming out of exec- executive session signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council back in public session. And then we need a motion on number 11.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize taking action in the pending foreclosure matter of Town of Wallingford versus Denise Whitaker at all, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And, uh, there being no further business on this agenda, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.